Good morning, everyone.
Before we get started, today is his birthday. So, the call will be...
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jason. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm almost 50. So good to see everyone. Good to have you here. If Steve Kaker lets me out, I'll tell you a story later about birthdays. But just glad to have everyone here. This time I'll call the Polley County Board of Commissioners work session to order for this on this January 23rd, 2024. And nice to have some elected officials in the room always. Judge O'Connor's here and Liana Nolan and City Council Lady Doris Debbie's here. So if I missed anybody, it's Jason's fault. So if the marshal bring the list of people wishing to speak, be awesome. And if you got a phone still on, which I think mine is, thank you, Connie. Good time to turn that off. It's a, I'm very glad, it's a privilege to have our Finance Director Tabitha Pollard bring our invocation and lead us in the pledge this morning. Stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for giving us this day. Thank you for the opportunity to join together in this setting and to be able to conduct the business of the county. We pray, Lord, that you'll give each and every one here the wisdom that's needed to make every action that's taken today. We pray for our first responders. We pray that you'll put a hedge of protection around them and protect them. And as we probably have no idea what they encounter each and every day, we pray, Lord, that you'll be with us all as we go about your business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tabitha. The minutes of January 9th, the work session minutes and also the January 9th board meeting minutes are available for review under our announcements and Team Pauling this morning. Something that I haven't previewed yet. Look forward to seeing this, the Get Paulding Reading Initiative.
So I do a program here called Preschool Reading Adventures, and we have recently partnered with Get Paulding Reading, and I'm working closely with Kathy Sanders. So she is kind of bringing in some materials for our parents and kids to get our kids reading.
This is the fourth year that they've had the privilege to be able to collaborate with the community as far as my position and Get Paulding Reading.
So this is a year-long program. We do it for sessions six weeks at a time, and we have six sessions that we teach the class throughout the year. We work with three- to five-year-olds in this class.
And we're just getting the word out, raising the awareness of the literacy, the need of literacy in our birth to five. Parks and Rec, we contacted them and said, hey, you know, we noticed that they have this preschool reading adventure class and the baby time. Libraries, we have lots of partners that have actually welcomed us in to help deliver the message that, you know, literacy starts with just daily conversations. And so we're excited that they're opening their doors for us to be able to come in and not only work with them, but with their parents. Just the distractions of life, maybe some technology or whatnot are taking the place of our books. And so we just want, you know, kids to know that you can't take away that essential thing of life, which is daily conversations and just reading to your child, even before they talk.
Class is $31. That gets you one class a week for 45 minutes for six weeks. Our next session begins on February 22nd. Registration for that will begin on January 22nd. To register for our preschool reading adventures class, you can do that online at recreation.paulding.gov or you can always come in person to any of our parks, so Mount Tabor, Taylor Farm, Burnt Hickory, or our main office over at the Brawley Sports Complex.
It's exciting, isn't it? What's more important in school than reading? So we have no invited guests this morning. Bid awards, none. Reports from committees and departments, none. Public participation on agenda items, no one's signed up, signed up for that. So the consent agenda. Consideration of the following consent agenda item is item number two, amend the January 9th, 2024 work session minutes and the January 9th, 2024 board meeting minutes, agenda item number 18, to state a term ending December 31st, 2026 for the Region One Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, DBHDD Advisory Council. So we're going to make that correction. And do you have anything you want to say about it, Rebecca? Okay, thank you. No old business, we'll move right into new business. Pretty short agenda today. Number three, item number three is discuss action to approve the purchase of Kubota membrane bioreactor MBR equipment instrumentation, support services, and warranty in the amount of $694,000. This purchase is funded through ARPA, it's American Rescue Plan Act, located in Post One and Post Four. And Mr. Wooton's going to bring us some more information. Well, I guess not. We're going to have Russell bring us some more information.
He isn't disposed today, so I'll be filling in for him.
Okay. Glad to have you, Russell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And we've had a discussion on a lot of this already, so y'all probably know a little bit more, but just so everybody else is kind of aware, up at Pumpkinbine, we're in the midst of doing a immediate needs and expansion project design. And as part of that, we're requesting the purchase of the Kubota MBR membrane equipment, which will actually be installed in an existing empty basin that was provided as a future expansion step during the original construction back in 2009. And this is that finally getting around to that point. This will provide redundancy and capacity for the plant even during periods of maintenance or cleaning of existing, you have to take a basin offline to do a cleaning, and that right now forces us to lose capacity, which is difficult to catch back up in as growth in that area has really kind of maxed out capacity at the plant. This will allow us to have that step to actually plan the next phase of expansion, which will be adding complete new membrane basins. So right now, this is an existing basin, existing equipment. It will tie in with all the existing controls, SCADA, computer system, all of that is already there, running the existing plant. And this purchase will give us that. And we do have the Kubota flat plate membranes at every other membrane bioreactor. We have four membrane bioreactor plants in the county, and they do all use the Kubota flat plate membrane. So this is also a way to kind of keep the same equipment, simplify stuff to keep on hand for repairs, maintenance, all that is already there and the same. So any questions?
Membranes are expensive, aren't they?
Yes, sir, they are expensive, but they make really good clean water.
Did you already say how long they last?
We have a 10-year warranty provided with the membranes, and we have had at the Upper Sweetwater Plant, just as an example, we had membranes that lasted for 17 years before replacement. And they definitely needed it by then, but we got every bit of work out of them that they could provide.
And you're going to say go Yellow Jackets at the end?
What's the point there, Ray?
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Russell. Item four is discuss action to adopt ordinance 24-01, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Article 2, Section 18-31d2, regarding water efficiency and update required fill-in information. Ms. Anne Lippman, Community Development, report.
Thank you and good morning. This ordinance here today is a, just a little background on this, Paulding County is a member of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, which is a 15-county and 96-city area located in metropolitan Atlanta that regulates water requirements. This adoption today is to be in compliance with the 2022 Water Resources Plan, and it deals with water efficiency. The county adopts the International Plumbing Code, which is a code that's adopted throughout the nation, and Georgia, the state of Georgia makes amendments every year, but this amendment, since it only relates to the 15-county metropolitan area, they have asked each local jurisdiction to adopt these requirements. I've spoken with our building official, Steve Turner. A lot of people are already doing these. The requirements deal with water efficiency for sinks and landscape materials, and this is very important for the water system to be in compliance with this Water Resources Plan. When we reviewed this requested text amendment, we noticed that we had some, there's some fill-in sections in the International Plumbing Code that are regional, and we had noticed from the 2006 to the 2018, some of the things that we had filled in and that we had amended our local code, the code section had changed. So we are also cleaning that up. And that is pretty much a summary of this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Questions? Some good backup material. Thank you for that. Item number five is discuss action to adopt Resolution 24-2, a resolution supporting the introduction of local legislation to add an additional judgeship to the State Court of Paulding County. Mr. Jason Phillips, our county attorney is going to report.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Baker on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, Chairman. We knew this day would come when we were in the early stages of the State Court being a reality here in Paulding County. It's been going since July of '22, and this is a request of the Board to ask the local delegation, I'm sorry, I can't talk today, which is unusual for me. The local legislation would allow for the delegation to put this out there. And just to give you a little bit of background on it, I've been working with Judge O'Connor for some time, and I appreciate all her work on this. And just want to let everyone know that this is not a recommendation that's coming from Judge O'Connor or myself or both of us together, but it actually is a result of a third party who did an analysis of the court. And it was an outside party, was Mr. Bob Bray who did it, who is the Executive Director of the State Court Judges Council of, which is an offshoot of the AOC. So anyway, he did an analysis, and there are a lot of factors that go into play with this, the weights of different types of cases go into play, the numbers of those cases. And the bottom line is, the civil cases have grown tremendously in that court, and they take a lot of time. And based on Bob's recommendation, that's where we're at today. Judge O'Connor's here, if she'd like to say anything. I don't want to put her on the spot, but...
I'm here for any questions you want, if anyone has. You did a great job. And thank you for all your work in initiating this whole process. Truly, everybody's, on behalf of Mr. Harris and Mr. Harris, we're all very grateful for your, the Commissioner's support, delegation's support, and you're initiating the process.
Well, and I appreciate all the time you spend on this. And again, I just want the BOC and the public to know that this is not something that Judge O'Connor and I sat in a room and just said, hey, we want to make this recommendation. We based it with facts, and those facts are coming from Bob Bray. And as a longtime student of the State Court system, myself being involved in State Court for a long time in Cobb, this is very much needed, and I can tell you that from the statistics and the analysis that has been done. So we're very, very excited that this could be a reality, and I think the timetable, and I appreciate you working with us on the timetable, when this would go into effect, and that's an important piece of this too. So there you have it. If you have any questions of me or a Judge O'Connor or legal, and thank you, Jason, for helping with the resolution.
Did you already speak at the timetable on getting another judge?
No, I don't think I mentioned that. So what we had come up with would be a January 1st of 2025, so it would be in the mid of our budget cycle for '25. And that'll give us time to prep for that, and that's going to involve some locations of offices and personnel and things like that. So really appreciate, again, I really appreciate you working with us on that because that's an important piece of this, really is an important piece, to be able to be prepared for that.
Thanks again for being here, Judge O'Connor. All right, we'll get to the final new business agenda item, item number six, which is discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute a letter of support for the Wellstar Paulding Medical Center Expansion Project, as set forth on Exhibit A, and county attorney is going to speak of this one, Mr. Jason Phillips.
Commissioners, as you are aware, and as many folks are aware, our new Paulding Hospital is currently at capacity. While being at capacity, the county population continues to grow. I think we're the 14th-largest county in the state at this point. So Wellstar has approached the county and is seeking the Board of Commissioners support in building a new medical tower and a new parking facility to expand the existing hospital. As part of this process, Wellstar is asking for your pledge of support to be willing to support up or in excess of 20% of the capital costs that will be incurred in building this new facility. While that certainly sounds like and is a large percentage, back when the Paulding Hospital was constructed in 2010, 2011, in those years, Wellstar came to the Board of Commissioners and asked for similar support. The Board at that time fully embraced that. That helps Wellstar obtain a certificate of need and hopefully takes us to a process where that certificate of need, which is the mechanism by which the state approves hospital facilities and hospital and medical expansions, hopefully by backing that, that will assist Wellstar and assist our community in expanding this hospital. The good news is, when the county did that back in 2011, at no time did Wellstar Health Systems ever seek to invoke any actual dollars from the county, but knowing that the county pledged its support helped the process move along. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I have Nicole Riedel with Wellstar, who is here today to give you all some of the highlights of what Wellstar is proposing.
Thank you, Jason. And thank you guys for having me here. I know we met maybe a week-ish ago, maybe now. So thank you again for just giving me the opportunity here. So I haven't met everybody in the room, but my name is Nicole. I'm the Chief Operating Officer over there at Wellstar Paulding Hospital. So just to give you a little bit of background and just really why this is really important to our campus here, so we opened and we'll actually celebrate our 10-year anniversary coming up on April 1st, funny fact, but we also changed our electronic medical record. It was not a joke because it was April Fools. It legitimately happened, but we also moved into that new building, which was exciting. So as we've continued to grow with the community, we've seen it just grow and grow and grow, which is great because we know the community is invested. Our own local cultural motto is neighbors caring for neighbors, and that is truly because of how hospital embraces community, community also embraces us. So we truly value that partnership here, hence why we're coming to ask for that support again, so we can continue to expand that campus. Some other important things to know is really across the country, we are the second healthcare organization across the country that has won Malcolm Baldrige, which is the highest-quality award you can win from across the country. The President of the United States is the one that actually presents you with that award. We're also Magnet Certified, which is a multidisciplinary approach for your outcomes that you provide, so your clinical outcomes based on that, you can get that certification. Plus leapfrog grade A, which is very important because again, that looks at your patient outcomes, and those that score an A, if you look at just all the hospitals, you have less likely events that could potentially lead to harm for our patients. So really need that support from you all, so we can continue to grow and expand that top-dessell care we can provide to that Paulding community. So right now, if you've visited our services, we are just at capacity. I'm sure that doesn't surprise many of you, if you or your loved ones have come to visit the hospital. Even through this year, we're at about 104%, so we have 112 licensed beds. We typically have about 125, 130 patients admitted, so obviously you can see the variance there. It becomes difficult for us. So just really exciting opportunity to continue to expand the campus and grow the campus and allow us to continue to provide that top-dessell care to our community. Any questions I can answer? We're very excited, so.
We love having you here. We've been in a couple of meetings with Nicole, and we usually get the whole presentation up on the screen or through the packet, but she's done a great job in relaying and communicating to the Board what this is all about. Tabitha's been instrumental in being able to take us back to the first towers that were built. And I was telling the group that I've never heard anybody say a bad thing about Wellstar service, so I haven't been there that much, thankfully, but...
If you need us, we're here.
I've been there a lot, and they do very well.
But as far as even being to help get the CON, it also helps with the funding side of it as far as lowering rates, stuff like that. But I think it was the last time y'all had it paid off in like five years or something like that. I mean, it was a pretty quick...
Yeah, we did pay, we didn't have to pay it off in five years, but we did. Yes, you were right.
That's right, correct. So I mean, you know, so the chance of having to actually ever act on that 20% is very rare, I guess.
It's very slim. Mainly kind of what Jason talks about, what Wellstar is looking for is truly because you guys have a better rating, credit rating, than what we do. We can get lower interest rates, which helps save, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars more when you think about the amount that we'll be spending to build a tower. So that truly is why we want that. Plus also, it would allow us to build a couple more beds based on the state need assessment. I think the state says we need about 47. We'd like to build 58 because I know, as you guys all know, we opened up in 2011, and we didn't anticipate that we were going to need, so we just opened up with two floors. We didn't anticipate we were going to need the sixth and seventh floor really until five years later. A year later, we were like, oh my gosh, we need those floors like today. And so we want to try to avoid that in the future and kind of overbuild, which we could fill them out, but overbuild just a teeny bit, so we're prepared for the growth that's coming. But yes, very low risk that we think that we'll even have to dip into those types of funds, because we actually allocate that full capital amount in our capital planning process. So we don't anticipate we're ever going to have to use.
And nothing to do with this, except for I heard you also say, which a lot of people were talking about, the parking, y'all are actually going to be doing a parking deck, which has nothing to do with this, but...
It does though, because I don't want to open up a tower and not have parking. That would be, that would be a very big challenge. But yes, we are, will also be building, and the goal is to build that parking deck before we open up the tower, because we know as we build it, we'll have more construction workers onsite, et cetera, so we have to have a solution. So that will give us the future need that we'll need just for parking in general. And there will be a parking deck for our team members. It wouldn't be a parking deck for the community. So that would open up kind of like the more of the retail kind of surface parking that we know we don't have enough of today. So yes, it will help fix that problem.
Nicole, what would, what will be going into that second tower? Besides the beds?
Yep. So we'll have the 56 acute care beds, and then one of the also, if you look at the demographics of Paulding, the biggest growth area is really heart cardiac-type diseases. And so the whole second floor will be dedicated to heart and vascular. And so that will allow us to expand our cath labs, so we can do interventional and diagnostic-type studies for our community, and then it will also give them the dedicated recovery space they will need. So right now, when they first opened up the first tower, we didn't anticipate having any cardiac services. We had, you know, when you come in there, and obviously from an acute care perspective, but we didn't anticipate doing any procedures from a cardiac perspective. We have quickly identified that that was not the right thing to do and have since already built out two cath labs. So this expansion will also give us the ability to expand those overall services, since that's the fastest-growing diagnosis and disease we have in Paulding County. And then also imaging too will be another expansion for us. They'll take our waitlist. We originally had a wait period of about six weeks to get a CT or MRI. We have expanded our hours until 11:00 PM, which we actually get a lot of good compliments. It helps with parking because there's not as many people there on the night shift, and so it's easier actually to get in for your appointment, but we've reduced that from four weeks, and so we anticipate again with this expansion that we can get patients in there more quickly, you know, within one to two weeks, especially for cancer patients, because it's very, you want to get them in a sequence very quickly so they can get their treatment.
And we've also enjoyed having Mr. Turner come in. He's going back and forth between Paulding County and Augusta, so that's why he couldn't be here, and it's so good to have David Austin, who's on the Wellstar Board, and I think maybe some other people in here on the board. Lauren, are you on the board?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you were. And I don't know when people come on and go off.
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah's on the board? I didn't know that.
I came on the board in June 78. I filled an unexpired term, and I can't quit. We love the hospital. My dad before me loved the hospital. He was on the board, he was treasurer when they built Paulding Memorial. When they raised, I think the county raised $30,000. The state contributed $30,000, and the government $30,000. And we have a 25-bed hospital of, a little over $100,000. Remember, they had our babies over there. I didn't spend a dollar.
It does have a lot of cool history, to your point. I mean, we started over at the Paulding Memorial, which is now our nursing center, so it just does have a lot of great community ties, and that's kind of where our cultural model comes from. Not kind of, I should say does, is that neighbors caring for neighbors, because it does have a lot of cool history behind it, and we want to continue to build that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, I just want to thank everybody for coming together last week at last minute to put this together for today. So Jason and Tabitha and everybody that got together at the end of last week, we all pulled it together, and it was a great presentation last week, so we appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it too.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. That is the conclusion of regular business. We had another elected official come in, his name is Matt Rollins, our DA, so always good to have you, Matt. No one has signed up for non-agenda items this morning. As has become our practice at the end, we kind of see if anybody up here on the panel has anything they want to celebrate or announce, community activities and things like that.
We have our murder mystery this Saturday at the airport. It is being put on by the Museum of Flight. If you haven't gotten your tickets, you need to go online and get them. I think the murderer will definitely surprise you. And also, Deidra puts these little words of wisdom before us on, in all of our meetings, and I just wanted to read this one to you because it really touched my heart. Pride leads to disgrace, but with humility comes wisdom.
Anyone else? Everybody good? Well, I do have one thing that I want to say here at the end of football season, professional football season. Everybody knows, at least George Jones, who has a nephew that plays at Auburn, who's probably going to go pro. What do you do if you need more points after you score a touchdown? You go for two, right? Well, we've got, or you might say you go the extra mile, you know, you hear that expression in, I guess scriptural, if you, somebody asks you to go one mile, you go two miles? Well, there are some people on my right and left that go the extra mile. And for example, the two gentlemen on the Board, Commissioner Dunn and Commissioner Stover, we're going to build a new fleet maintenance station, new maintenance facility. And so they go pick up the Fleet Maintenance Director, Ms. Tanya Stein, and they take her to Cobb County to visit that fleet maintenance facility. They didn't have to do that. They wanted to learn more about what that facility was like and how we might want to build ours. And, you know, they've got other jobs. This is my only job. So, you know, they have to make time to do things like that. Another example, this lady on my left, Mr. Galloway, wanted to... Another example, this lady on my left, Commissioner Galloway, wanted to have a kayak and canoe area in this county at Sweetwater Creek, and it also goes into Cobb County, if you go down the southwest, southeast part of the county. So county manager, Mr. Baker, and Commissioner Galloway go pick up Parks and Rec Director, Michael Justice, and they go visit Virginia's counterpart in Cobb County to see if they would want to work with us on this launch point there. She didn't have to do that. She just wants Paulding County to be better. And this other lady on my right, Commissioner Caker, she has been real active in this mental health issue that we have, and it's state, national attention. And Sandy has gone to the Region One Mental Health Development Disabilities and Addictive Diseases meetings, and most of them in Carersville, different places, they move it around. But she's kind of become the lead woman, the point woman, point man, point woman for mental health in the county, and Commissioner Dunn's helped her, worked with her, too. And now we've actually got a group that county managers pull more people together. And so they don't have to do that. They do that because this county, they want the county to be better. So I want to say that this morning, that it's a pleasure to work with commissioners that really put their heart into their work. So, anybody else? And one of the commissioners has their wife here today. Is she going to take you out to lunch?
She figured my dad was going to...
Cherie waved at us. That's a kind of a low wave, but we'll count that. Well, we don't have any executive session this morning, and I'll just entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Our motion to adjourn is our second.
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned. Thank y'all for being here today.